Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online as well at pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via the Town of Pennfield Television. Following tonight's proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search for Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and it is free. If you wish to address the board tonight on any public hearing matter, there's going to be a chance for everyone to do that. If you're here in person, or you can call 340-8771 to ask a question or give a comment, then you can also send in an email through the town's website, pennfield.org, and we'll check those periodically to see what's coming in. We'll just ask you to come up if you want to comment, and we'll ask the applicant as well to come up here and give us a name and address, and then go ahead and speak your mind about the application. We think your involvement is valuable, and we certainly encourage any participation. In fact, we think the town does a really good job every month of alerting citizens what's on our agenda, so that citizens know if they want to come in and talk about something, they can do it, or if they want to call, they can do it, or type an email. How does the town do that? Well, a couple of ways. One is they send postcards to people that own property near the subject application. We probably all received them in the mail. You can take that, you can put it in the recycle bin, or you can read it and say, "Okay, jeez, what's going on here? I have a question. Let me call and find out, see if I'm interested in making a comment." The town also posts the agenda on their website and out there on the bulletin board. But also, the town makes the applicant put up the sign. All of you've done that, or all the applicants have. It's like a big, well, size of a for sale sign, and people driving by can see, "Hey, what's going on? Maybe some of your neighbors came up to you and said, 'What's happening here?'" That's all done to make sure that people are aware of what's going on and know that they have a right to come in and comment. We think it works well, and we're happy with it. So tonight's meeting is going to start with a work session. We'll talk about the minutes from the last meeting, take a vote on those, and then we'll tend to any tabled matters we have one. And after that, we'll go right into our public hearings. I don't think we'll have a need for a recess after the one tabled matter, but you never know. But again, we'll ask the applicant to come up, give us name and address, and then typically what we do is the board member that's been assigned as lead on a particular application will walk the applicant through the process. It just, we find it makes it easier on applicants. Everyone submitted a nice written application, very thorough. We've gone over them, so we sort of get the gist of what the application is, and we have some questions for clarification usually. So with all that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay, let's move to the minutes, then, of the August 15 meeting.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Matt and a second by Andrus. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, let's get to the tabled application. 1099 State Road.
Hi.
Hey.
We brought reinforcements.
I was here last time with the baby.
We had our small child.
Didn't work out so well.
Grandma's watching him tonight.
I thought she just wanted to make sure it didn't get tabled again.
Yeah. Right. Last month, you were here looking to put an accessory structure out back in your property. Required two setback variances and then one for size. We tabled last month because you were going to talk to your neighbor about the potential of, could you actually buy some property from him? Because you had been kind of casually talking about it, and the outcome of that, now it sounds like that's a go.
Yes, it is a go.
Okay. And so from that, looks like you're going to gain about 3/4s of acre, give or take. Probably, once surveys are done, you'll know exactly what that is.
Correct.
But what that does is that eliminates your two setback variances, so you no longer have any requirements for a setback variance. You're able to reduce that, and then you reduced your ask for the size by, I think it was 330 square feet. Is that correct, Andy? The reduction for what they're asking?
Um... Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, so basically, I think you were allowed before 435. Now, you're allowed 765, and so that's where that 330 difference came from for what you're now. So basically, you've reduced your request by 330 square feet from this purchase.
Correct.
Okay. I think from that standpoint, I don't have any further questions for that, unless anybody else does.
No.
Not me.
Okay.
All good. Okay.
Okay, so then, we'll start off, I guess, with, there's no public comment for this anymore, right?
No, the hearing was closed.
So I'll move that this is for seeker, this is a type-two action, seeker requiring no further review.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a seeker motion and a second. Motion was made by Andrus, declared a type-two, and I seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then on to the merits for this application. I'm going to move to approve this. It'll obviously be conditioned on a purchase offer, you know, acceptance going through, and then, you know, that filed with the, I guess, county clerks and all those things. Yes, or, Andy? Yeah?
Just wanted to add that this is going to require approval by the planning board for the lot-line shift.
Because of the lot-line shift.
Okay. So obviously, it would be conditioned upon that.
Step two.
Overall.
Okay. In terms of the merits for it, I guess originally, it would have been probably a lot you were asking for, and I think with this purchase, that's going to make a big difference on your variance, because you gave two examples, one at Alden Glen and one at Hampstead Way. While those properties were, you know, three times larger and two and a half times larger than your original property, with you increasing the size of your property, it scales a lot closer to what their asks were in your neighborhood to what that is. So in a sense, the standard's been set, so that's about the unacceptable range for what this board has granted. And so, for in terms of undesirable change, it doesn't appear that there would be one in the neighborhood, because these type of structures exist, and you gave examples of those. Could there have been some other method for you to go with, based on the size requirements? That's the size you needed, but with the purchase of the additional 3/4s of acre, you're making the effort to try to make your lot larger to accept a larger structure like that. Is it substantial? I think, yes, it was previously, but now that we've eliminated the two setback variances and increased the size allowed by code, it's probably still considered on the verge of, you know, on the high end of what yours is, but with the two neighboring ones that you've cited, I think that's in character with the neighborhood now. Anything in terms of adverse impact for the environment? Nothing was identified in the application. Most of these are self-created, because if you weren't looking for this, then, you know, it would have never happened. So I think for those standards, I think you've met that requirement to move forward, and I think the big one is, you know, you'll have to go to Planning Board pending this board, and then I think the filing of that information then with the town and the clerks probably for your purchase agreement for lotlines, and that will be all set for the conditions.
Great. Very thorough. Nice work.
Thank you.
That's a motion to approve.
Second.
As stated, and a second by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving us extra time to work on that, too.
Sure thing.
Okay, and spend some more money.
Exactly.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. All right, the first application for tonight, please.
Richard Samuel, Rich Sam Properties Incorporated, 555 Mosley Road, Fairport, New York, 14450. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setbacks than permitted under Section 250-5.6-D3 of the code, and less buffer than permitted under Section 250-7.2A of the code at 2480 Browncroft Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Rich Sam Properties Incorporated and is zoned limited business, SBL number 123.07-1-21.2480, application number 24Z-0040.
All right.
This, the applicant has amended the application, they modified the location of the building to eliminate the need for the setback variances.
Correct, just buffer.
Just buffer.
Just buffer. Is that applicant here tonight? All right.
Your choice, yeah.
Hi. Hello. So, yeah, it's an accessory building, basically for my maintenance.
Actually, before you go, name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Richard Samuel, 555 Mosley Road, Fairport, New York, 14450.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So basically, it's an accessory building for, like, all the maintenance, snow removal, landscaping, maintenance of the building. It's 40 by 62, and originally, I kind of wanted it in the back corner, kind of away from everything, but it was, I guess, too close to the lot line, so I, we did amend it. You should have amended drawing, actually. That was the original one, but we turned the building, so it's now 50 feet off the north line, but still 20 feet off of the west line. I've talked to my neighbor to the west, and he's fine with it. He has a signed letter saying he's okay with it. Would you guys should have that as well, too?
Excellent. Talk a little bit about, because what you're looking for is, you know, you reduced the rear, because I think last month, you asked us to hold off while you were in talks with the neighbors, and you relocated the property, because I think before, you were looking at basically 20 feet and 19 feet or something like that originally from the back and the side.
Yep.
So now, we're 50 foot from the rear, and then 20 foot from the west or left side looking at the property. Talk about why it couldn't go 30 feet from that line or a little bit farther, since, from the looks of the grade, the hillside doesn't go up until, you know, the grade doesn't really change until farther away from that, so I guess what would prevent it from going, I guess, closer to the lot line, the edge of the pavement there, if it went a little bit farther east?
East. So you could go a little bit. There are some very large trees that would probably have to be knocked down.
Okay.
That was kind of my biggest thing. Also, kind of where it is, I kind of wanted it away from, like, the main area.
Okay.
It's also a kind of a different type of structure, doesn't really match the architecture of an office building.
Right, from the front, that, you know, that's more of a modern and updated front on that, and this is going to be more of a steel structure.
Right, right, and now that we turned it sideways, instead of 40 feet, you have now 60 feet of exposure.
Okay.
So...
And then you said you could move it a little bit farther to the east, but what you're trying to avoid is cutting down some of those larger trees that are back there?
Yes.
Because you're trying to keep the buffer, I guess, in a sense, around the property to shield it from the sides?
Right.
Okay. And I think there was, I think you mentioned it, and there was a letter on record from the neighbor to the residential neighborhood, or the neighbor to the west there, correct?
Yep.
Yep. Any kind of illumination on the exterior of this building? Or is it going to be left dark at night?
Not going to have electricity.
Okay. What else do I have? I don't have any other questions. That was a pretty thorough application.
Yes, it was. Any other board members have questions? They're going to yell at me.
No.
No. No. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, give me one minute.
Sure.
Just want to make sure that there aren't any.
And Andy, I believe you said this does have to go to Planning Board as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just because the amount of space on the commercial lot that's being, I guess, disturbed or altered?
It's, yeah, because of the size, it's triggering a requirement for site plan review.
Okay.
And that's October 10?
Yes.
Okay. And for sketch plan? Is that what that's for?
Site plan.
Site, mm, okay. All right. So I don't see any phone calls on this application, nor do I see any email comments or questions. Anyone in the audience? Did I already ask that? I'm giving you a second chance. No? Okay, nobody wants, okay, then, let's...
Let's jump right to seeker.
Yeah.
I'm going to move this type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
I will second that.
Thank you.
I keep pausing, giving Laura a chance.
No, I don't like to. It becomes a fight.
Did you get that?
May I? Second?
Yeah.
No, Dan was. You were second, then.
I know. All right, so we have a seeker motion by Andrus. I seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and then on to the application. Originally, as we saw it last month, I was not in favor of it, but I think with the revisions that we've seen and moving away from the lot lines, I'm more inclined to make a motion to approve this. I think with the letter from the neighbor to the west that's most impacted by the buffer, and the applicant's claims that the position of where it sits right now reduces, you know, the most amount of trees are left undisturbed, creating more of a natural buffer around it, makes a big difference here in terms of where it sits and the fact it's not going to be illuminated, so it won't be seen in the evening and off-hours like that when there's the light from outside. In terms of the merits, in terms of the buffer, I think it is important that we try to maintain as much of a buffer as possible from, you know, a commercial to a residential site, and I think from the back, we did a really good job with that, but we're limited to how far we can move to the east, because of the trees and the topography of the land. So for that variance, it's probably one that will be needed for that site, and I think it's been proven that we can do that, because it probably could have moved maybe five foot, but I don't know if that changes the impact of the buffer one way or the other to the west, because the trees wouldn't change any on that side. Is it substantial? I think originally, it would have been, but now that with the changes we've seen, there's no more setback variances, and now strictly the buffer variance. Any adverse impact? Nothing was identified in the application or during this hearing. And is it self-created? Yes, because that's basically where the, you know, it's been placed there by the applicant, and that's where they've chosen, so most of these are self-created. But I'll move to approve.
I will second.
All right, I would, before we call for a vote, I just, looking at the letter from the neighbor, not only is he supportive, but he said he obviously seen the current site plan, and he's aware that the, where the building's going to be and how it would, it's only going to be, I guess, the 20 feet from his property, but knowing all that, he still supports it, so it's good to point that out.
And I think also, turning it 90 degrees makes a less visual view from the west, you know?
Right.
Looking that way, because it's actually the narrower part of the building.
It's another example of the applicant working like our last one.
Yeah.
You know, to make changes that are better for everybody. All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the mic completely done?
Here you are.
Yeah. With the five of us or four of us.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. All right, number two, please.
Brian and Jillian Blyer, 199 Willow Pond Way, Pennfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an in-ground swimming pool and patio with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.4-C3D of the code at 199 Willow Pond Way. The property is currently or formerly owned by Brian Blyer and is zoned PD, SBL number This is application number 24Z-0042.
I'm Brian Blyer, 199 Willow Pond Way.
Jillian Blyer, same place, 199 Willow Pond Way.
So we moved in thinking it was a starter home, you know, we're in the PD district, they're fairly small lots, you know, every, sorry if I rewind. We've done some work to the house, really made it to something that we see ourselves in long-term. You know, every summer, we find ourselves dreaming about a pool and sort of put it to the wayside, because we felt like our lot was too small. This past summer, I've spent a bunch of time trying to, you know, play with different designs that may work, and was able to kind of come up with this idea that we could make it work, but we would need to, you know, bring it closer to that rear property line. We do have a walkout deck, and so, or a second-story deck for a walkout basement situation, and so my goal is to not put it too close to that, because I don't want it to encourage any, you know, safety issues with people wanting to jump from a deck into a pool. And I think that's the most of it.
No, I appreciate you. The application was really well-done. Actually, I'd ask Andy if you'd already built it, because some of the drawings are really quite specific, so I appreciate that. So the request that you have here is really a 70% variance, and you mentioned kind of the size of your property, you just don't have a lot to work with to begin with. Is there anywhere else or anything that you can do to reduce that request?
So it is a 70%. Our fence, one thing that I forgot to mention, our fence is already three foot over the property line, so from a perception standpoint, you know, it won't feel like it's that close to the property line for, as far as the character of the neighborhood and whatnot. And I really have played around with a bunch of different shapes and sizes, and, you know, for a, you know, really with the investment, a reasonably-sized pool, it's kind of a hard spot to shoehorn it into.
We didn't build that fence.
Okay, I was going to ask.
It was there.
It was when we moved in, it was like that.
Okay. You had a few folks from the town out. There's also a sewer issue, so even if you were to move it with that, Andy, my understanding was that there was also, the placement currently does not impact the sewer.
Correct.
But if you were to move it or do something, place it someplace else in the yard, it could impede on your sewer easement and...
It couldn't go any further to the east, which is where the, sort of the widest, or, yeah, I guess it's, there's really not a whole lot of wiggle room.
Mm-hmm. And then you did also have the property owner 201, which is...
Directly to the east.
To the east.
It's the only neighbor that'll really be able to see down into the fence. The grade slopes downward away from the house, and so there's eight acres of town land behind us, and so if you stand on the other side of the fence, you can't really tell what's on the other side of it. And so I did include a picture of a neighbor sort of mirrored across the pond that has almost an identical situation, and you can't really tell they have a pool.
Mm-hmm. And that, the rear, what it's going to most impact is owned by the town.
That's correct.
The property is also town land. We did look, I didn't see, Andy, I think you pulled the records, I didn't see any of those other pools. You had mentioned some other pools in the area. None of those have been given variances. I don't know if they were supposed to or not, but just, I know that you had made comment to it, so I didn't see anything where there was previous variances, but again, the one property owner on 201, did you speak to any of the other property owners in the area?
We didn't. We didn't really think that they'd ever know the difference.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions?
No.
No.
All right. I don't see anybody in the queue for the phone call, nor do I see any email comments. So anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's go ahead with consideration then.
So let's, I'm going to start with the motion for seeker. It's a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further...
Review.
...action?
Review, yeah, whatever.
Review, whatever. I'm a little rusty here.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
Sabbaticals do that, too.
Take the summer off.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay, so on the merits, I would make a motion to approve this request. You know, as far as it being in character with the neighborhood, it certainly doesn't create an undesirable change to the neighborhood. You know, it's really, given the property, the size, you have the sewer that you're contending with, the fact that behind you is not owned by somebody else, but the town owns that land, it's really hard to achieve putting a pool in any other way. I know that you guys worked really hard to try to shoehorn it, was that the phrasing that you used?
It was.
To get it to work with your property? It is a substantial request, 70% is substantial. You know, as far as an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions, no, the surveyor was out there, and it doesn't, or it is adequate distance away from those sewer lines. And then, of course, this is self-created by the nature of the request. So I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second. Any further discussion?
I think we just note that, you know, these are, you know, this is a PD district, so it's a slightly, you know, they're smaller lots, they're smaller everything in terms of, you know, comparison to other residential lots in the area, so it's, it is difficult to fit much, much in the backyard there.
Yes, and that can cut the other way as well. But on the other hand, you have some unique characterizations of this property, being the town right behind it, the slope, such that the variance, which is about to be granted, I'm assuming, is, has minimal impact on neighboring properties, and in fact, we have a lot of support from one of those, so I'm okay with it as well. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Omar Garcia Aquero, 1529 Victor Road, Masseter, New York, 14502. Requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant at 1998 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Empire Park Management LLC and is zoned limited business, SBL number 093.02-1-12.002. This is application number 24Z-0043.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you?
May we have your names and addresses, please?
I'm Omar Garcia, and address is 1529 Victor Road, Masseter, New York, 14502.
I'm Abigail Ramirez, and my address is 135 Kamala Square, Canada, New York.
All right, so you want to open a Mexican restaurant in a location on Empire Boulevard, sort of, oof, in the back of that building there?
Yes.
Was Firecrust Pizza?
It used to be a firecrust.
With some ice cream, and then another pizza guy came in and wanted to go in there, but for whatever reason chose not to.
Well, we took over from Firecrust Pizza.
Right.
But the landlord, you know, we signed the lease and everything, and the guy got out of it, and he said, "Hey, we currently have two other locations, and one in Henrietta and Masseter, and this will be a third location."
Okay. So I think the biggest issue in my mind here, and it may not be an issue at all, is the parking. But I know you were trying to, and did you succeed in getting an agreement? I got, there's a letter here from Empire Park Management.
Yeah, that's the landlord that runs the whole, they own the whole plaza, the whole...
Okay. And you hope to have seating for 150 people?
Yeah, I was telling Andy that we normally, it looks like it's more, but we normally Yeah, I was telling Andy that we normally, it looks like it's more, but we normally are, the way we do it is we serve big plates. And we, our booths are, we're trying to make people comfortable, so when they come in, our booths are five feet long. So, Andy told me that, you know, by code, those are, I think, for five people. But I told him, we never really sit five, because the way we do, if you guys, I don't know if you guys ever been to any of us, any of our restaurants, but our plates...
I need as much room as possible when I'm meeting Mexicans, for a variety of reasons.
You know, so it's like 11 by 14 inches plates.
Yeah, wow.
So, those are big plates that require quite a bit of, you know, space. So, that's the reason we bring in those, make people comfortable and sit, you know. But, I was telling Andy, we don't, I mean, I think at nighttime, all those businesses close, which is normally the busiest, busiest for restaurants is dinner. All those businesses there, they close 4:30, I think, 5:00. The landlord talked to all the businesses there, and they're all, and they're all happy that we're going there. They're all, they're all ready to, you know, eat there, and, you know, I don't see, we have reduced the amount of seating, we did reduce, and I talked to Andy about it, that we are reducing it. You know, like, we did three booths on one side, on, actually, on the one that has four, it's actually just three, and then on the other side, it's just four.
Okay, and you're gonna have takeout, too, I assume?
We do, we do a lot, we do like, it depends, like, one Henrietta, we do, we don't do as much, Massedon does more.
But you're gonna offer it?
Yeah, we do offer it.
And how about the drive-thru? I know that you're not gonna do the drive-thru. Okay.
There's no drive-thru anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't...
And outdoor seating?
We do, this year, we're not using it at all. We don't have time, but...
Right.
The seating is only up to like eight tables, I think. We're kinda keep it the same way, we're not moving the patio, we're not expanding the patio, we're not adding any more concrete slab to it, it's just keeping it...
And how about your hours?
We're opening at 11:00 Monday through Saturday, 11:00 to 10:00, and Sunday night.
Okay, and do you anticipate having any music, either inside or outside, or lights?
No, not as of right now. The only big celebration normally we do is Cinco de Mayo. As you guys know, every, probably Mexican restaurant does it, that will be the only, you know, at the other places, we do, we do a special permit sometimes if they require us to have like a tent out in the parking lot, but it's like that, we don't really, we don't do anything.
How many parking spots are there? Sorry.
I think there are over 50, there's like 60 counting that little, that space on the side of it, which is empty right now, it's vacant, and the landlord said he doesn't know what, he has no time for that place to open up right now, or has any plans in the near future.
There's actually 73 parking spaces on site, yeah.
You know, but as I see, like, if you guys ever drive there during the day, it's not really many people, because only the banks people come in and go, you know, they're not...
Yeah, it's Kennedy National, right there, right?
Yeah.
What, how many would they need, I'm sorry, for 100, an occupancy of 150?
121 would be required by code.
Well, then are we, are we looking for a variance for that, then?
No, because it's an existing parcel, there's no changes being made, no increase. It was a used before as a restaurant. If they were proposing to expand the business or modify the parking area, then we would, they would be required to get a variance if they didn't meet the parking.
All right, I think also, given the hours of the other businesses there...
That's one of the reasons we chose the spot, because...
Yeah.
The hours, most of those businesses really, I mean, there's like a karate, there's other places that I never see...
Well, childcare in the back, you know, bank in the front.
The childcare's empty, I think it's had some issues before, so they, that's why I said the landlord is not, that place is vacant, doesn't, it's not operating right now, and he told me that, right now.
And honestly, the medical building to the north...
Right across the street, they close early, too.
Yeah, there's a hill.
Yeah.
But you could build steps or something if you really, because nobody's there at night, I don't think. Okay. All right, I'm all right. Any other questions from the board?
No.
No.
Nobody's called in. I don't see any comments, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, fine. Then we'll close the hearing, and we'll move to consideration. The first part is seeker, and I'd make a motion to declare this a type-two action under seeker and requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And to the merits of the application, I'd make a motion to approve. I think it's good that we're doing everything we can to fill the space.
Thank you.
A little bit concerned about the parking, but that's not anything we couldn't handle if we needed to. And we, we've had restaurants in there before, the wood-fired pizza was...
Yeah, I love it.
It was a hot air, spot for awhile. I don't know what happened, but, but they, there was never an issue with parking there as well.
Yeah, so we hope, you know, we hope to bring good business to Penfield, that's what, you know.
Good, good. And I don't see any adverse effects on any other, the other properties there, it's sufficient ingress and egress.
Yeah.
The lighting will stay the same, everything that's in the application, we will hold the applicant to. We have the parking letter from the landlord, so for all these reasons, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further comment or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Don't forget, you're in Penfield there, not Webster.
Penfield.
Now what? Hey, he brought it up, Valvoline has another sign.
I told everyone that below 2,100 is Penfield.
There you go. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Take care.
At least call it PenWeb, you know, that Valvoline is killing me, killing me. Goodness gracious, all right. Number four, please.
Tara Litchfield, 863 Penfield Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an existing residence and proposed addition with less setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 863 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Tara Litchfield and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 123.18-3-42. This is application number 24Z-0045.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Tara Litchfield at 863 Penfield Road.
I'm just Dan from Best Construction here on her behalf.
Perfect. Thank you. So, we looked back, and this is actually your second time here. And I looked back, I said, wow, they have, you know, historical-type things, and then I realized I was part of that historical time that, since I've been here for awhile now, it makes me feel older. So, yeah, yeah. I know you just hit 40 on like...
Ouch!
That's right, it is. So, welcome back again.
Thank you.
So, for this application, you're looking to add a bedroom and a bathroom to the, I guess, which way is that road run when it gets there? Is that the...
To the right side of the house from the road.
Is that the west? I think it's the west side, right?
It is the west side.
West side, yeah. Of the property. Previously, the, you did the, I think, the covered porch on the east side...
Right.
Which was actually closer to the road than this one will be.
Correct.
So, looking at your application, it's difficult, from what I can see, is for you to put any addition on that side of the house unless you were, at least to the very rear of the house, you could probably get away with it, but once you start creeping up anywhere past the halfway point of the depth of your property, you need a variance because your house currently sits a little over 27 foot from the right-of-way. And so, with a 50-foot setback requirement, with a pre-existing, non-conforming-type thing, you're kind of put in a place where anything you do with the house really requires you to have some kind of variance.
Right.
Even though the addition you're proposing is over seven foot from the front of the house, so it'll actually sit back from the front of the house, but it still requires a setback variance just based on where it was built way back in the day. And so, as the road's gotten closer and things like that, the variances are required on a lot of those older homes there. And I know it looked like in your application, most likely you consulted with the builder, and this was the best spot to put the addition, just based on the logistics of the home and the layout, which is why you're here for the variance, in a sense, and not putting it in the rear of your home.
That's right. I also have a, like a hot tub on that side, which I would prefer to have a structure in front of. And on the other side, it would cut into the driveway area, which faces the other road. So, all in all, I think it will make the exterior of the house look much nicer to have it all in one line. I mean, it's a little bit back, but visually, you won't see that at all, just like, look like a continuation from the road.
Right. And then, from the road, it wouldn't extend any farther. Typically, people that are coming here for a variance for them, for the front of their home are adding on to the fronts as opposed to the side, which still, you know, it just happens to be in that zone of the setback requirements. Okay. In terms of staying in character with the, you know, property, you're gonna, I think you mentioned similar siding, roof, everything, you know, in a sense, it's gonna match, and it's not gonna be any different than what's currently there, or try to get as close as possible.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, no emails, no phone calls, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No, okay, let's move to consideration.
Okay, I'm gonna move that this is a type-two action, seeker requiring no further review.
Second.
All right. Motion under seeker in a second. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then, onto the merits of the application. I'm gonna move to approve the application based on the following factors. You know, for undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, with the setback being, the home being further back from the front of the property, it's not gonna appear that there actually is anything being added closer to the road than what exists right now. And I think as part of this application, we're also cleaning up the setbacks for the existing property, correct, Andy?
Yes.
And so, you know, since the whole property now will be in compliance with variances, that way you won't have to worry about the pre-existing piece, it'll all be granted already for that. Is the, you know, are there other options? There probably could be some minor option changes, but I think all of them would still require a variance based on the layout of the home, and with consulting from a building expert, the location of that site was chosen, and so it still requires a variance. Is it substantial? At seven, at seven foot back from the existing, while it appears like it could be a lot more, it's still farther back from the front of the house, so I don't really feel that that's a large ask. Self-created, I think every application here is self-created because people are, wanna do something with their property. That's all I've got for that. I'll move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve for the reasons stated.
I'll second.
And now, we have a second. Okay, any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Nice job, Andres, very thorough.
Thanks. That's what happens when you're at every meeting.
You are just...
Welcome back.
You're not gonna let it go. That's great.
You just told all of Penfield how old I am.
Well, I mean, here in the three-person logic...
You gotta see, all of a sudden, it's lit up.
It's lit up.
Next application, please, Andy. I know you're waiting patiently for me to say that.
Thank you. Stephanie Whirl Meyer, 1704 Qualtrix Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second accessory storage building, whereas a maximum of one accessory storage building is permitted under section 250-5.1-D4 of the code, and to allow an existing and proposed accessory storage building with less setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1704 Qualtrix Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Stephanie Meyer and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 108.20-2-44. This is application number 24Z-0046.
Hi. Stephanie Whirl, 1704 Qualtrix.
Dan Whirl, 1704 Qualtrix Road.
Welcome. Thank you for your applications. You've got a lot going on. So, as Andy mentioned, sort of three reasons why you're here. You want to add a shed, and then you want to place it sort of in line with the current shed that is already on your property, which happens to be out of compliance, that you purchased the home and the previous owners had placed that, just, it's one foot from the rear of the property, so that's what you're here for, right? Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Okay. So, why don't we tackle first the second storage? So, you need a second accessory building on your property. You had mentioned in your application that you have a single-car garage as it is, and so you're looking to add a second shed on your property because the current one isn't large enough for...
Correct.
What are you looking to store in this?
Yeah, so we're trying to gain some additional space because, like you said, we have a one-car garage. Currently, we use that space for essentially storing all of our stuff, kids' toys in there, there's some lawn equipment, tools that I use, and just some other odds-and-end stuff. So, we can't really use the garage for its intended use, which would be parking in the garage, mainly in the winter. We were hoping to park in the garage because of winter storms and shuttling kids back and forth to daycare. So, we were hoping to gain that space back for that reason. We were trying to add an additional shed to our backyard.
And as far as adding the additional, I mean, really, the only alternative would be to add on to your garage, which...
Correct, yes, which would obviously be a very larger expense to us versus adding a shed to our backyard.
And then, as far as the placement, so you, I can, you can see in this picture that Andy's pulled up, that your current shed is placed there, previous owners. Is there any way to move the current shed a little bit closer so that it's, I mean, it's one foot from the property line...
Correct.
Which is a pretty significant...
So, yeah, we...
...year-to-year cost.
It was there when we moved in. We really didn't have any thought about ever moving it until we came here to add another shed, and then, you know, we were told, oh, you need a variance for this shed as well. You know, as far as what we were told from the neighbors, it's been there for potentially maybe a couple decades. I don't know how far back the records go, but, yeah, it's been there for, from what I've been told by the neighbor who's been there for 40 years, there's been a shed, or at least an existing shed in that place. As far as moving it, it would be a challenge because, you know, there's, it is where it is. If we moved it, there would be an expense to probably bringing it back to a place that's aesthetically pleasing to the property. I don't even know if you, it's kind of an old shed if we moved it, I don't know if that would be worthwhile, too. I don't know if that would just knock it down or whatnot. Obviously, we'd have to bring somebody in to move it for us, so there's an expense there. As you can see, it's right on the lot line there, so it's tucked in between a tree and some landscaping. The neighbor's landscaping behind us is also there, so we were hoping to leave it where it is, and it also creates a little bit of a barrier between us and the neighbor, so it creates some sort of privacy on that side. So, yeah, it would be challenging to move it, I would say.
Have you spoke to the neighbor who's most impacted by this, that not only keeping the current existing shed, but that you're gonna add another shed right next to it? So, you're gonna have kind of two sheds and aesthetically...
Yep, so we spoke to her. Actually, she's in the audience tonight. If she's interested in speaking, she can.
She just smiled and waved. That's a good sign.
So, we spoke to her about the fact that we were gonna put two sheds in. She had no objections to it. You know, obviously, the concern was, is it gonna be aesthetically pleasing for both us and the surrounding neighbors? We assured her it would be a very nice shed, so she had no issues with that at all.
Mm-hmm. And then it... And then as far as the material that you're going to, I mean, I'm just trying to look, two sheds right next to each other, are they gonna look the same?
Yeah, so they're gonna be pretty similar. So our, our final goal is actually, the shed that we purchased, which this is similar to the one that we want to purchase, we're gonna paint the current shed the same color, so that they match, so that they obviously look and feel like they belong together in the backyard, if that makes sense. You know, we're gonna do everything possible to make it blend in with something that looks like it belongs.
And again, with moving it, I know nothing about moving sheds. I'm assuming it would be very difficult. Andres, you're like...
I would say, the same way they're gonna bring it in is the same way they would move it. The new one.
What do you mean?
Well, you, I mean, you're gonna buy a pre-built shed, correct? So they bring it in with a machine and set it in place.
So it would be expensive to move?
Potentially.
And the potential for damage that you say.
Yeah, I think it's more, I'd be more worried about it falling apart.
Got it. And it's been there for 40-plus years. There was no, the previous owner didn't get a variance, so there's nothing on record, and that's why you're asking for one now, so...
Right, right. Yeah, and, I mean, the shed looks very nice. The, the previous one, as far as like, how sturdy it is when moving it, I'm not so sure that it would, you know, survive the move. But, yeah.
I didn't, those were all the questions I had. I don't know if you guys...
I guess the only other question I would have is, did you consider removing the old one and putting a larger new shed in that was a little more in compliance?
So, obviously, we went through a lot of considerations. The shed that's there, we obviously love that shed, and it's, it's very useful to us. Currently, it's holding a lawnmower and a snow blower, and, you know, as you could probably figure out with an eight-by-eight, that really doesn't leave much room for anything else. So that's why we were looking at the additional shed to hold all the stuff. We kind of figured out like, how much additional space that we may need in a new shed, in addition to the shed that's already there, to hold all the stuff that's in the garage, all of our patio furniture that we'd like to store in there in the winter. You know, the ever-growing collection of kids' toys that we would like to store in there in the winter. You know, and stuff like that, so that we, everything can kind of stay as it is currently, and not, not like have toys out and stuff, because, you know, we want to keep everything away when they're done playing with it. So, yeah, we, we, the size of the current shed plus the new shed was kind of the square footage I were looking at. Versus going down a road of like, you know, having an even bigger shed or something.
Well, I was thinking, like, in terms of, if you took that one down, and then in a sense, now you're asking for a variance for just one, you know, there's not, you're not asking for a variance for two sheds, you're asking for one that might be, you know...
A little bit closer to the back of the property.
You know, it could be, you know, but now you're asking for, you know, a rear setback variance. Let's say, you know, you went five foot, but it was a larger one, now you don't have to ask for a second variance for two sheds, that you still have just one, because you would, you know, take down the old one, but put a larger one up. Was that a consideration?
Right now, I mean, it wasn't something we were considering, because, you know, we have that beautiful landscaping that we love back there, that tree, the, the apple tree, we would hate to lose. So it was just, you know, something that we would be pretty upset if we had to take away all that beautiful landscaping that we put in there to kind of dress up the area.
Right. So in a sense, to fit something larger, you would have to remove a tree or something like that, because you're putting one to one side of the tree, one's on the other side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, the other thing is the large pine tree that's in the middle of our yard kind of limits the space that we really have back there.
Were there, Dan, did you...
No, I'm just watching Andy trying to get that pine tree.
Really did, I'm sorry.
He's a master with a mouse.
Nice try. All right. No phone calls, no email comments? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? One more smile and wave? There you go. You know, you gotta come up if you want to. If you want to, you really do, I'm not kidding you. Well, it has nothing to do with, it's gotta be, they gotta be able to record it and everything. We heard you. Okay, she said she's fine with it, which we figured. All right. Let's move to consideration then.
Okay. Well, do, this request is a type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action.
I'll second.
All right. A seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the merits?
And then I'd make a motion to approve.
You sure?
I am. There's just a lot here, so, okay. So, making a motion to approve both the, the full request, which is adding the second accessory building, and then also the existing and the proposed placement, both needing the variance as stated. So as far as creating an undesirable, produce an undesirable change to the neighborhood, the second accessory building, I don't think we'll do that here. You're using consistent materials, you're gonna paint the other one to make it fit within the character. Your neighbor has indicated her support of having the second building there. And then again, where the placement is going to be, it is very close to that rear, but the existing one has been there for, you mentioned, 40-plus years. And so it hasn't, there's no complaints on file for, for existing where it has for this many years. Could you have achieved this from a more feasible avenue? Outside of either moving the, the current shed, which we determined would be not only costly, but potentially damaging, you could tear down the shed and make one larger shed, but again, based on the property itself and the landscaping, that would be very difficult. You could add on to your garage, which would be significant expense. So really, there's not many other options left. Is it substantial adding, yes. Both of these requests are substantial. You're adding a full extra building. I think that that's a substantial request, just by the nature of it. And then the variance, the setback being so close to the rear, it's a 90% variance, so yes, it is significant. Does it have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No, it does not. And yes, it is self-created, because you have asked for these variances.
All right, so...
I made a motion to approve.
Right. And I will second that. So we have a motion to approve for all the reasons eloquently stated, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good luck. Next application, Andy, please.
Joshua Stein, 633 Clem Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.7-C1K of the code, to allow a board gaming store lounge restaurant, and a special permit for signage under section 250-10.3-A of the code, to allow a larger building-mounted sign than permitted under section 250-10.13-B of the code at 1900 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC and his own general business, SBL number 093.02-23.11. This is, this is application number 24Z-0047.
Okay. May we have your name and address, please?
Josh Stein, 633 Clem Road, Webster, New York, 14580.
All right. So you want to put a Gametopia, that's the name of your business, into Baytown Plaza? What's, could you describe the location there? It's on the same strip, I think, as the Pizza Hut, going up and down, if you will, that starts with Pizza Hut.
Yeah, it's about the far end of that, pretty close to the far end of that strip.
Right. So plenty of parking. Parking's not an issue in that plaza at all. Tell us a little bit about the business, what's gonna be happening there.
So it's going to be kind of a hybrid of two sorts of businesses that you see around Rochester. There is a retail aspect, where people come in to buy board games, tabletop games, and every successful game store that's also hosts events, where they have tournaments, release parties, things like that. And these events, often there's no food, there's no reception, there's nothing to elevate that. So the idea is to have kind of a board game lounge with that, to do both of the options, both of the businesses in the same spot, so that, you know, I'm essentially doubling the area for profit.
Okay. And do you have any intention whatsoever to have any outdoor seating?
No.
All right. And how about music? You gonna play music inside?
I'm not currently planning on it.
Okay, but you, certainly no intention to play it outside?
No.
Okay. And how about your hours of operation?
The planned hours are from 1:00 to 10:00, 7 days a week.
Okay. I really think the only issue here, and you'll see in a few minutes, I don't think it's that big an issue, but you have a sign, if we could pull that up, Andy, that is, has to be measured in a particular manner.
Yeah.
And you have, I don't even know what that is, that...
It's, it's a beer tap.
It's a what?
It's a beer tap.
Handle a beer tip.
Oh, I can't believe I didn't know what that was. But I didn't. So, okay. Because that sticks up higher, we have to measure the sign as it were completely full, and if that wasn't there, I don't think we'd even, quick math, we wouldn't even be here. But that makes the sign larger than allowed by a, I don't know, 10, 15 feet or so.
Almost doubles it, yeah.
Yeah. So, but, given where it is in that plaza, as you said in your application, it's not gonna be readily visible from the street. So any effects from it being larger than allowed, I think are minimal, if they exist at all. You gonna have any signs on the big tenant signs out on the street at all?
No, DeMarco's looking to get more name recognition, like, national chains on those signs.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Not yet. One day.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
I was actually gonna say, the sign I prefer to be slightly bigger, because that plaza could be difficult if people are, you know, trying to find it, and...
Oh, yeah, it certainly helps. It helps in, in many ways. Okay, but you, so you're, you are going to be serving food and alcohol there. What kind of food?
It's gonna be a pretty limited sandwich menu.
Okay.
So nothing that involves a HUD or, you know, flat-top fires, none of that. Hopefully, we'll expand to that, and that'll be another conversation in a couple years down the road, but we gotta get there first.
How many people are you expecting to host in this Gametopia?
So, the seating, the way I have it set up, would sit about, I don't know, 20 at the most. I'd be thrilled if I got 15 people in for an event, given time.
Anything besides beer, any, alcohol-wise?
I'll do wine, just because the license is the same, so I might as well.
Okay. Very good. All right. I don't have any further questions anymore from the board. I don't see any call-ins, nor do I see any emails. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right. Very good. Then we can proceed to consideration. And we will start with the environmental. I'm gonna make a motion to agree with the recommendation that this is an unlisted action, and then to further take the step and declare a negative declaration here.
I'll second.
All right. We have a seeker motion made by me, second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now on the merits of the application, I'd make a motion to approve it in total. Regarding the sign, I think we've pretty much covered that. If it weren't for the strict method of measuring, we wouldn't even be here. It's a nice, attractive sign. It fits well with the plaza. Plenty of parking here, hours of operation are reasonable. The amount of people that are gonna be in there is not gonna be overwhelming in any manner. No outdoor music, no outdoor seating. So I think everything is in order, given everything on the application, I'd make a motion to approve for those reasons.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
Kevin Lindsay, 12 Valley View Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow a proposed deck with less setback than permitted, under section 250-5.1-F2 of the code, and an existing residence with less setback than permitted, under section 250-5.1-F1 and section 250-5.1-F2 of the code at 12 Valley View Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Kevin and Lauren Lindsay, and is owned R-1-15, SBL number 139.11-3-80. This is application number 24Z-0048.
Kevin Lindsay, 12 Valley View Drive.
Lauren Lindsay, 12 Valley View Drive.
Welcome. Thanks for your application. So you're looking to put a front porch on the house? I'm calling it a front porch.
A side porch.
Side porch, front porch, deck, I've seen it all in this. But you're looking to add on to the home, based on your property lines, you need the variances for the setback. Is there any way in which you could make the, what do we call it, the side deck, side porch, smaller or shrink it, so the variances aren't needed in any way?
The size of the porch right now that's going up is the size of the garden that's already there.
Yep.
That's how I, we came up with that dimension.
And so really, just if you wanted to put anything on to make it where you could actually sit on it, it would sort of require this...
Yeah.
Some type of variance. And there's three specific variances that you've requested, based on kind of the layout of the property, two of which are quite nominal requests. One is, you know, about 50% on the rear side of the property, but, again, based on sort of the layout of the property, there's not much else you can do to have this. Are you gonna have additional lighting on the, the front porch? Will there be any kind of centered or motioned lights on...
No.
Okay. It's pretty straightforward. I didn't have many questions here. It's the property, the way it is, to put any kind of porch, which it looks like what you're, you're planning to do would be to add curb appeal and add to the home value and to the, the area itself, by putting something sort of on, on the side of the home.
Exactly.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Nope. I don't see any call-ins, nor do I see any electronic. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? No? Okay. Let's move forward.
All right. This is a type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right. Motion under seeker and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I will make a motion to approve, as you've submitted. You know, again, I've mentioned that this is really looking to add to the home value, adding a lot of curb appeal, making the neighborhood, I think, even nicer, and the home nicer than, than what it is right now, which is lovely as it is now, but, and then it's, really, there's not much else you can do to, to achieve the desired deck without foregoing it altogether. So, they're really not substantial. I mean, I mentioned that the one request is a little bit on the larger side, but the other two are very, very small variance requests, less than 15%. There's no adverse effect or impact to the physical or environmental condition. And of course, this is self-created, as we've mentioned, anytime you're here, it usually is self-created, but a lot of it is the result of the property itself, and, and kind of where it's positioned as it relates to the, the road. it's positioned as it relates to the, the road.
All right, so we have a motion to approve for those reasons. In a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Andy, next one, please.
Katrina Rugiro, Big Oak Driving Range and Golf Shop, 441 North Washington Street, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for area variances, for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a taller fence than permitted under Section 250-7.1-D4 of the code at 970 Panorama Trail South. The properties currently are formally owned by the Harmony Group LLC and is owned R-1-15, SBL number 139.09-1-5, 7.1. This is application number 24Z-0049.
Okay.
Hi. How are you guys?
How are ya?
Good.
Can you state your name and, uh, your address?
My name's Nico De Prima. Uh, my address is 25 Kimberly Road, Pittsford, New York, 14534.
Thank you. So, it's a driving range?
Yes.
And it's got a tall net, but it's not a tall enough net?
We have an 80-foot net currently, that we've had for probably 30-plus years.
And the golfers in Penfield have gotten better?
Yes, they have.
Not all of them.
Um, so over the years, the technology of golf clubs has got better, people are getting stronger, hitting the ball farther. So at this point where the 80-foot net would keep all the balls into the range, now that with the distance of, the way people hit the ball nowadays, 120 feet would be the height that we would need in that to keep all the balls into the range, to keep everyone in the surrounding area safe, and also not having errant shots go outside of our particular property line.
What, what, what does that net back up to?
So, the back of that net, behind it, there's three houses on Fallsview Lane, uh, that we are trying to protect, so there's no errant shot, city people's house, or kids are in the yard playing, and...
Have there been any issues?
Uh, we've had some issues in the past and everything with some broken windows hitting the car, balls hitting the car, you know, people can hit the ball with our current height of our net, 80 feet, and at a trajectory, if you hit the ball around 330 to 340 yards, which might seem very far, but people can do it, um, they can throw it into their cul-de-sac. So we've seen balls, you know, bouncing around and everything. So at 125 feet, the average tour player on, uh, the PGA Tour can only hit the ball really about 100 to 110 feet, so at 120 feet, if you're hitting the ball higher than that at any point, the ball cannot leave our property.
And is there any other way that you can accomplish...
Not with the height requirements.
Protecting the neighbors and doing what you wanna do without increasing the, the height of the, the fence?
Yeah, we've tried moving the stalls and aiming them away from the, that particular net, um, and people still, as people are beginning to golf, are not that good, that just swing really, really hard, they could hit the ball 30 to 40 yards either direction, so it's kinda hard for some people to really aim at one specific spot and hit their target.
I'm curious if you've talked, spoken with other golf ranges, is that the right...
Driving ranges.
Driving ranges?
Yes.
Uh, is 120-foot net, is that something that other Rochester ranges...
Driving ranges.
Driving ranges have used?
There's not a lot of ranges in the area, um, just for the depth of our range, so our range ends at about 240 yards. Uh, there are Topgolf and facilities around the country, they go up to 160, 280 feet, um, but their range is at 200 yards. So with the shorter range, they have to put a higher net to make sure the ball doesn't continue to carry.
Yeah, like at most golf courses, if they have a range, they might not have a net at the far end, 'cause of the distance that they have, the ball wouldn't be able to travel, right?
So they might have a 300-yard range, so they might only need a 30-foot net to be able to catch all the balls, so the farther, the shorter your range, or the higher the net you would need to keep all the balls in the facility.
If you placed a limit on yardage, and let every golf, golfer choose what club he or she could use, what would that do to your business?
It would probably kill our business, because everyone wants to hit a driver, which is the club that goes the farthest, and that kind of produces a lot of our income in terms of sales of our business and everything, to be able to fit people outside and let people hit golf balls outside, so for limiting people, we'd have to limit the driver usage to every individual that comes into our business, which would cripple our business.
Just, just to clarify what, what you're saying, not only are you a driving range, but you, you, you're an outlet too?
We also are a retail shop.
And so people come to the retail shop and want to look, to look to purchase a driver, and since you also have a driving range, they're gonna wanna test that driver out on the range.
Correct.
So if you limited it to seven iron and, and below, or three iron and below, they, you would lose the retail business as well as the driving range business.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Nope. I don't see any call-in or email, anybody? Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask about the neighbors in the back. I mean, you're doing this in part to help them, have, do they know that you wanna put up a larger net? 'Cause I mean, I mean, honestly, I, I get the point and why you need this. Aesthetically, it's...
They, they want a net.
Okay, 'cause, uh, you're tucked back there, and so unless you're driving from the, like, the casual person, the only person who's gonna see, or the only, are the people who are going to the driving range and that, those homes in the back.
Correct, yes.
And they're, oh, they like the idea?
Yeah, and where their property sits is, it doesn't really show on that, on a topographical map, you would see it, where the elevation changes from where their house it is to where the actual net is, it's about a 200-foot difference, so even with the net going up higher, you really have to look, you know, directly up.
They probably won't see it.
You're not seeing the...
Okay.
It's a pretty steep look up there.
So really, the only people who are gonna see, 'cause right now it looks so nice, it's at the tree line, they're gonna see it, are the people who are actually going to be using your driving range?
The range, that are looking directly at it, correct.
Okay.
All right, anybody in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay, thank you very much. Let's, uh, go to the consideration then.
Uh, for seeker, I would make a motion to declare this a Type 2 action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right, we have a seeker motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All right, so for the merits, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, um, going through the factors, it's not gonna, it's really not gonna make a change in the neighborhood. First of all, it's, the neighborhood is about three houses behind it, and there's always, there's already a large net there. Uh, if anything, it's gonna create a desirable effect on the neighborhood, 'cause it'll stop golf balls from going through the cul-de-sac and potentially causing damage to property and, and people, um, so it will be a desirable change. Um, we, we went through it, it's probably not something that can be, uh, done through any other, any other means, uh, or method. Um, it's substantial, since the, uh, the permitted fence in, in Penfield is six feet, uh, this is 120 feet, so, uh, this actually, I, I might say, I wanna keep this record, uh, this may be the most substantial, uh, request that we've seen.
What was the outlet? I was trying to remember what outlet on club was.
I don't think it was this much.
No, it was not, 120 feet.
I think it was only 100 then.
Yeah. Um, uh, it's not gonna have any impact on the physical, or I guess adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Uh, again, it's, there's safety concerns, so it may have, if anything, it would have a, uh, positive effect, and it is self-created, um, but the other factors outweigh that, so I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second. And I even think that the, um, park back there, you got a lot of people walking on the trails that I think are actually closer to the driving ranges that the homes are, that would be probably, it's more of an impact in terms of safety from the trails down there of people potentially getting hit with a golf ball, since that's become more popular.
Does that trow, or that, does that, is there a trow that meets up with the, uh, the new trow to the...
That's all part of the...
It's all part of that, yeah, so I agree.
Yeah, I used to, uh, know somebody that lived there, on that street.
All right.
Dave Van Berck, yeah, and, oh, beautiful street. They had the...
Yeah, it's a real nice spot.
That's awesome, so, uh, I guess it's good that you're moving to help protect those folks. All right, so we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good luck.
Next application, please.
Wong Nguyen, 2209 Penfield Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.5-C1F of the code to allow a combination business, single-family residential use, and area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow a parking lot with less buffer than permitted under Section 250-7.2-A of the code at 2209 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Wong Nguyen and Quang Tran and is owned business, non-retail, SBL number 140.01-2-7. This is application number 24Z-0050.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you give us your names and addresses?
Hi, my name is Hung Nguyen, and I'm living at 2209 Penfield Road.
Wu Chong at 251 Fisher Road.
Fisher Road?
Yes.
And what, what town?
Uh, excuse me?
What, what town?
Uh, Pittsford, New York.
Thank you. Um, all right, guys, so you're looking to go, uh, to 2209 Penfield Road and open, uh, a, it's a nail salon?
Yeah, kind of like a small nail salon.
A small nail, nail salon, within what's already a single-family house?
Yes.
And, uh, so let's start with the, with the house portion of it. How, how many people do you anticipate living there?
Living in there?
Yeah.
I mean, right now, we haven't had anyone living in there yet.
Okay, so do you plan, do you plan on occupying the space yourself, or do you plan on leasing, renting it out? What is...
I, no, no, we're gonna be using that for like, you know, like a small nail salon, but like in futures, if like something changes...
Sorry, can you just talk a little bit louder than the microphone?
If you could get a little closer to the microphone, or just pull it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, for right now, I'm just using for like, you know, getting a little small business into it, and anything changes in the future, I might be moving in there and living there or, or, yes, but I'm not gonna be letting it out for renting or any of it, so.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Mostly just her and her husband, that's all.
Okay.
We'll be living there.
That, well, that's gonna be, that, that was my question.
Yes, so that was, you know, something.
Okay, so, 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 two?
Yes, just two, yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. And, so, how much of, of the building is gonna be occupied by the, the salon, and how much of it's gonna be occupied by the residents?
It's gonna be like the first area, when we convert the, um, the garrets, to be like, that will be the areas we're gonna be using for the salon.
Okay.
Pretty much upstairs, and that more like a split level, so they have a little bit in the basement for it, like, I don't know what they call for basement, because they have another basement down to it too, so like that, we're gonna be using for residentals.
Okay. And, and what sort of services at the salon are you gonna be providing?
I, just pretty much is like, uh, you know, doing nails and the pedicure, and that's it.
Okay. And how, how many customers at any given time are you expecting?
I mean, for right now, like, we only have me and, and, you know, my husband working into it, so, pretty much about like two customer right now. Yes, pretty much at a time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so this is on, this is on Penfield Road, right? Right next to the McDonald's?
Uh, yes, but M&amp;T Bank.
M&amp;T Bank, okay, so, and, so from there, you can, the egress and ingress onto Penfield Road, it's only to Penfield Road, right? You can't access the building from another?
No.
And, and at that particular part of Penfield Road, you could turn left and right, correct?
Turn left, yes, correct.
Okay. Um, have there been any issues that you've seen with the traffic and with, with being able to make that turn?
Uh, so far, I've been in there for quite a bit, I don't see any problem for it at all.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you mind if I ask?
No, go ahead.
Uh, by Andy, actually. Andy, who controls the service road there, behind, yeah, that, do we know?
Uh, well, I think there's a access easement on there, I mean, it's, it's part of this property here.
Okay.
Um, I mean, the, the road goes over, across several properties.
Yeah, 'cause it goes all the way back to Doodlebug's.
Yeah, it goes all the way back here.
Yeah, it's probably a planning board issue, but maybe access into that wouldn't hurt. I don't know, whatever. It's not far, it's right there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Matt.
No, no, it's okay. Um, so, by, by the way, Dan just brought up planning board, I'm gonna let you right, know right now that, that my motion is gonna be to table this, because there are some questions that I have that need to be answered. Um, uh, like, for instance, signage, do we have any depictions of signage or anything like that? I, I didn't see anything.
I don't think we received any specific details or plans for signage yet.
Yeah, so I, we're gonna wanna see some signage and, um, and the buffering. I know you're looking for a variance on the buffering, but we're looking for, we're gonna need to see the buffering plan, uh, to, what, what you're gonna be planting in that buffering, and, and what sort of...
Yeah, we will plan to kind of like the buffering, like, you know, we're gonna be like 25 feet away from the buffer, and we're gonna get in some like the, abridor or something around that, so like get more privacy for the neighbor right behind it.
And then, and then, most importantly is the planning board application, because what, what planning board may do may affect the, the size of the variance that you may need. So that, that's gonna be the biggest one. So if they approve it as is, then we know what the size of the variance you need, but if they, if they require a change, then it's gonna change our outcome and what we do, okay? But let, we're gonna keep going through this. Parking, how many, how many parking spots do you anticipate having?
For right now, like, we're looking for about like 16 parking spaces.
16 parking spaces?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And do you, do you feel that's gonna be enough?
Oh, definitely more than enough, I like, yes.
Okay. Um, so let, let's talk about the, the actual nail salon itself. Um, so i- i- is it gonna be creating any, any odors, any smells, any fumes, anything like that, that people outside the building can smell?
Uh, no.
Okay, so you're, you're not gonna be pumping noxious odors out of the building and into the, into the neighborhood?
No, yes.
Okay. Um, who, who's, if you're on your property, who is immediately to the east of you?
Uh, that one of my, um, neighbor, like, that was like one of the elderly lady next to mine to the east, and another side was like M&amp;T Bank already, so like, yeah, I literally don't have a...
So that 2213, that one where their cursor is, that, that's a house there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And have you talked to the person that lives there about your plans?
Yes.
Any issues?
No, she don't give any issue about that, yeah.
What about lighting? Is there gonna be external lighting?
External lighting?
Yes.
I...
So, are you gonna make the parking spot lot bright in any way outside?
No, we don't plan to.
Okay, what, what are your hours of operation gonna be?
I, we're running around like from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So besides the arborvitae, are you planning on planting anything else in the, in the buffering area?
Pretty much not, just like, yeah, get that to cover up pretty much everything, right, you know?
Okay. And what about the sign? Are you, are you planning on having a sign?
I mean, like, right now, we don't, we might have like a little signs into like the front door, or, not even front door, it's just like on the top of it or something that you can see, but not in, gonna be right into the property or on the...
Can, can you get us some sort of rendering of what the sign is gonna look like and where it's gonna be on the property, so, and the size, so we can take that into consideration with all of this? with all of this?
Can we do like a small sign right by the road, like, you know, like, by itself? Would it help, you know?
Whatever the sign is you want to put in, we just need to see it. We want to see it, and you're going to want to talk to Andy to make sure something like that, you're talking about like a monument sign?
Yeah, like, you know, nothing like big or like, I'm not sure.
So depending on what the sign is, you may need a variance for that sign, let's say. If you want more than one sign, then you need a variance for that.
But just one small sign, that's all.
Yeah, so the answer is maybe, that's why, but that's why we need the rendering.
I see, okay.
Okay? I'm good.
So, Andy, the variance request applies to the property to the south? That one right there where you are, the buffering?
Yeah, the zoning, the zoning changes, this is...
Oh, that's where the zone, okay.
Yeah, this is obvious, this is all single-family residential.
Yeah, so the property to the east is not residential?
No.
No, but it's actually, I think a few doors down, there's businesses too, that's the...
Yeah, there's a much more businesses, dog and a dance studio or something further down.
I thought there was another nail or spa.
Yeah, like three more houses down there, like nails along there, like all kinds of stuff down that way, like out to the, to the east side.
Yeah, so, so given that fact, I mean, the property to the south is, there's a lot of distance between...
Yeah.
The property line and the house, the pool, whatever, I think they have a pool there, so that's just important to note too. I certainly going to join your motion to table for the reasons, but, you know, you asked about the neighbor to the east, which is a good and fair question, the planning board may ask as well, but...
It's definitely the same.
The one in front of us is to the south. Okay, any other questions?
I had a question, for the parking requirement, Andy, is that just based because of the floor plan, the square footage, and it's based on how many, you know, how many square feet and that turns into how many parking stalls they need? Is that why it's so large?
Yeah, the, they, yes, we determined that they're meeting the minimum parking required by code.
In asking for 16?
Yeah.
It does seem like a lot.
It seems like a lot, that was my reaction, especially if they're talking about having two people working.
Could you pull up the site plan again?
Yeah.
I just want to see how many...
I mean, I think there were what, five chairs in there?
Five, yeah, yeah.
So there's five chairs, so...
Well, I mean, for now, it's only two people, but like, that could be like four or five, just in, you know...
Maybe lots of people want to come out and watch those five people, that's true.
The friend coming in.
Could be stadium seating.
Well, it's a new business, it's only two of them for now, but like...
But you're building for the future.
Yeah, we'll build up, and it could be like, but like the max, we have like five people at the most, including her.
All right, well...
And I assume planning board is probably going to want to know what kind of landscape plan you have for the buffering.
Right.
They'll probably want details on that, and may even turn it over to the town arborist on site, or on call, or whoever they...
One more question though, I mean, since to the west, there's like a roadway back on the side there, is it possible for us to like do like a...
A driveway?
An...
Well, that's actually what Dan asked, you know, what would the process of that be? Because that's not a state road anymore, that's...
No, you're going to, you're going to want to contact the owner to see if you can get an easement, so that you can connect into that.
So who would own that spot that was like to the west?
I'm sure Andy could put you in touch with.
Yeah, and that's something the planning board's going to take a look at, because generally, there is a requirement for cross-access. I'm sure there's a plan for cross accents, cross-access for all these properties to the rear.
Good point, yeah. Kind of like across the way...
The rengen.
The rengen, and all those connect across the back, same way.
Not sure about the feasibility of, or the, you know, if it's a requirement to connect at this point, I'm not sure, across this way.
But if that's something you're interested in, you can contact, I think.
So do you do like require more twist back there, like more landscaping back there too?
More landscaping?
Yes.
You just, you need to, there needs to be some sort of planting in the buffer zone to reduce noise and...
And, you know, headlights and things like that from when, you know, it gets darker earlier and things like that, so then we, you know, the residents behind there can't see...
I see.
To the front, so more of a visual barrier.
Okay, perfect.
All right, I don't see any phone calls or electronic, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No, all right, well then let's proceed.[1720.97]